Act on issues raised by the public input, but may choose to schedule consideration of the item on a future agenda. Mr. Kurtz.
Hello. I'm with the Cannon Valley Fair.
You state your name, please.
Greg Kurtz, Cannon Valley Fair. I've just got some sheets here I'd like you to take a look at that we're planning on doing over at the fairgrounds. We've talked about this once before, but I just wanted to bring it to you now and so you could see what we're planning on doing. If I could hand these out? What we're going to do is put up an informational sign on our front ticket office so we can let the public know what's going on during the fair, what events we might have coming up at the fair. As you can see there, the sign is 78 inches long by 16 inches high. As much time as I've spent over there this summer, I've paid attention and then I'm going to say in hours' time of mowing over there, I've witnessed 50 cars go by. So it's a busy highway. And I think for the public to know what we have to offer is a good deal. We've got a couple horse races coming up yet this year. This Saturday, we've got a wedding that's taking place there. So we've got stuff going on. And I know all of you have, if you stood at that front gate and went from right to left and just looked, what you see is the city garage, the swimming pool, two houses. Those houses are approximately 300 feet from our front gate and Hannah's Bend. So as far as a nuisance sign, I don't believe that it would be. We would have the option to turn that sign on and off. We would have the option to tone it down so it isn't as bright. But it's something that the fair board feels we need just so we can give the public information on what's going on. I haven't ordered it yet, but I wanted to let you guys know what we're going to do. That's probably it. If you've got any questions and I can answer them, I'd be more than happy to.
We usually don't act on anything that's brought up at public input, so appreciate your information.
Got a question. You talked about weddings. Is that when you get exempted from zoning ordinances, it's for agricultural fair purposes? Is that a fair purpose?
Say it again, Neil, I'm sorry.
I say it's, your exemption from zoning ordinances is for agricultural fair purposes.
Or rental of the fairgrounds.
Might want to talk about that.
Okay. We've already had, we had a wedding there last year.
Yeah, but you're talking about signs from zoning ordinances. Because them signs don't comply with our zoning code in that district. So if it's not for agricultural fair purposes, I wonder if it's legal.
To have a wedding there? Is that what you're saying?
Not about the wedding. It's about the sign.
About the sign.
If you're going to put up advertisement for horse races.
Oh, I understand what you're saying.
And go-kart races and weddings and stuff like that. It's not for agricultural purposes.
Well, it is to benefit our property. Well, I think it is, so, yeah.
I don't know.
I see what you're saying, but if you read deep in, and I've put in just this one little exemption here, or not exemption, but 38.18, that's the Minnesota Ax Society that we belong to, which if you read deep into it, I think you'll read that...
Oh, he might want to before he spend the money.
Yeah. Like I say, I haven't ordered the sign yet, but I just want you all to know.
You might be limited to what you can put on the sign.
We might be.
Yeah.
We might be limited to advertise for...
Remember agricultural...
A Bears game. A Bears game, we might be limited that we can advertise there's a Bears game going on. I'm sure that the city, and I remember the city having one of those cord things across that counted traffic. You would be surprised in an hour how many cars go by down there.
I didn't mean to cut you off. I was going to say, when you were saying, Mr. Johnson, about it might not conform, is that because of the size or because of lighting or because it would be a second sign on the property or...
Urbage.
What does that mean?
It's not allowed in that district.
Oh, the sign is not allowed in that district?
No, yeah.
Digital signs aren't allowed in that district, but if he says he's exempt, we might want to look that up.
Right.
And also, the content might be questionable if he's going to advertise weddings and advertise go-kart races and stuff that is not agricultural purposes.
Is not for the fair itself?
Right.
Yeah.
Now, is that one of those things where one could request one of those variances for that or is that not...
We'll have to look into that.
Okay.
Yeah, you have to do some more research before you buy the sign.
Yeah.
And is that, what is that, that's our...
I believe it's R2.
Two, which is residential?
Residential, R2 or 3, I don't remember what.
I think it's R2.
Two?
And it's been that way for as long as we've, none of us probably know, but is there a reason that it is that? You know, you all know what I'm talking about. You all know where the fairgrounds is. Do you see any spot down there where there's going to be a housing development built that it would have to be residential?
I understand what you're saying, but this is for information purposes. We can't debate this because we're not, we don't have our information. Alls we have is yours.
Sure. No, I just wanted to present what we plan on doing.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is public hearing for Leon Endress. The amendment to the city code relating to well and septic utilities.
Commission, Leon Endress, on behalf of the Timber Ridge Development, is requesting to amend city code 151112 to allow for a well and septic system to serve a residential lot. More specifically, he is, he wishes to serve the estate lots located in the southeast corner of the development as they are separated from the main portion of the development. The current city code requires water and sewer lines be connected to the city's public system.
Okay, so, at this time, I'll open up the public hearing relating to that amendment. Is there anyone wishing to speak to that amendment? Second call, anyone wishing to speak to that amendment? Third and final call, anyone wishing to speak to that amendment? I'm going to close the public hearing. Do we discuss that now or go to the next public hearing? What do you think? Should we discuss?
It's up to you.
I think we should discuss this first and then move on. How do you feel about that?
Sounds good to me.
So...
And this is conditional upon when sewer and water hookup is available, that those four lots, or those two lots, four buildings would hook up to it?
Correct.
I have a basic question. Is the city unable to service those lots with sewer?
They are so far away from sewer and water, it'll be 50 years before we get through that valley. It's out on 24.
Yeah, I know where it is, yeah.
Okay. The Rydon, I can't remember his first name.
Don.
Don.
Ryland.
Ryland. That's got to come through his, the sewer has got to come through his property, come through the valley and head up the hill.
So it'd be, it's kind of a, I hate the word leapfrog, but it feels like if you put a sewer...
Well, it would have to develop up to it.
Yeah.
And I don't know how long that would be.
So...
See, this, that property got cut up.
Yeah.
From 24.
Yep, got it. But the amendment is to change the code entirely, not for specific property.
Correct.
And that's where I have an issue. We'd be opening ourselves up for other opportunities there. I mean, if we put, I just don't, I just think it would have to be for those specific properties and not for a total change of the...
Do you want to tighten it up a little more? Because under B, water supply, there's an exception as approved by the city council based on 1, 2, and 3.
Where do I scroll?
It's under the ordinance.
Yeah.
If you scroll back.
Maybe I didn't get that.
Go to another page.
Yeah, I know, I'm on my way.
See, and maybe under 1, you know, the developer, when that time comes, is going to be long gone and it'll be probably the third homeowner on the place. But maybe it just states that the, when sewer and water become available, the landowner will be mandated to hook up.
So we could just make it specific to these places and not change the whole city code?
I think if you left it generic enough that if another situation comes, but tighten it up enough.
Yeah.
That not everyone that comes available can be available.
Yeah. How do we determine if they're not available?
Well, what is reasonably available, let's just take what we dealt with a couple months ago. If they wanted to put in individual systems, water was right next door. You wouldn't allow them to put individual system-ins when it's right across the road. So maybe somehow we tighten that up, that within a reasonable distance, what's reasonable according to the planning commissioner, according to the council.
Yeah.
At the time, right? Maybe it's not a footage, oh, well, I made it by five feet, I can do this, right? Maybe it's reasonable where it gives the council discretion to say yes or no.
Yeah. Yeah, because I would hate to see it, you know, become anything other than the exception.
Because, you know, it's a half a mile for today.
Yeah, and that's an exception.
Right.
And that's what I...
But not 200 feet.
But you say, you know, it's a two-plus acre, so somebody's going to say, well, is it for all two-plus acre lots?
Correct.
No.
But it's got to be, it's got to do with the availability of sewer and water.
Yeah, yeah, so we just don't want it to open up a whole can of worms.
And I agree with that.
All of a sudden.
That would be my biggest thing, too.
Who determines when it would have to be hooked up then? If it develops right?
When water and sewer runs by the place.
When it runs by the place.
Yeah.
And how close would it have to be to do?
Well, I would say in the intersection or intersection in the ditch or wherever it's going to be when it goes up that hill.
Yeah, because...
In that instance, right?
Yeah, got it. Okay, well, I just was concerned that a development would have two-acre sites on it with everything else being regular lots and just the two-acre sites would be, you know, could have their own sewer.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we're looking at size.
Yeah.
In fact, I know we're not looking at size, we're looking at availability.
Okay, okay.
But I agree, you know, Diane was talking about that, I think number one covers that, but I think the developer agrees in writing, well, you know, the developer's going to be long gone.
Yeah. So it's got to be like, almost like a covenant in that...
Now, let's talk about standards of sewer and water that they have then. Who determines what standards they...
That's also in your, it's in the ordinance.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that's about a state or county, whatever is higher?
No, that's the city.
City?
Yeah.
Which is higher, which is higher, the city?
Yeah, yeah.
The standards of the type and size of septic system?
Yeah, we have specs that we have.
Based on what, the kind of buildings and property?
No, well, it's engineering specs of what we have to put in. It's either cast iron or plastic, eight-inch or larger, as an example for water.
Yeah.
We have engineering specs that, that's what we put in as far as...
My concern is on the larger acres, you know, two acres, you could have a lot of buildings, more bigger houses, more water usage.
Yeah, our minimum size is eight-inch.
Yeah, and the septic system is my major concern.
Oh, yeah.
Is that, do we have standards for that, on that kind of property?
Yes and no, because with new technology nowadays, you can run a two-inch line that'll serve a grinder pump and mini grinder pumps coming off of several houses, and that'll serve, you know, a dozen houses.
Yeah.
With the technology we have today.
Yeah.
What the water is all about is fire protection.
Okay.
That's all.
And we can't run water to them either?
That's a long ways.
Long ways.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, they determine there's water available there?
You mean as far as well?
I guess just make it deep enough, it'll be available.
Well, yeah. That'd be their issue, right?
Yeah, it would be.
But I think, I think you're right. Maybe it gets tightened up a little bit.
Yeah.
We can't just like do the variance or whatever, it's got to be an actual ordinance change?
When Shelley drafted this, we talked a little bit about the subdivision ordinance and how it's got to be done. She didn't like that idea, but we can, you know, we've got time because they're going to put them four lots into outlots for their first edition.
Mm-hmm.
So we've got time to bring this back next month.
Yeah, so if the council has more than one option, is what I'm thinking, for these specific lots and tighten up, and you don't, more than one option to tighten up the ordinance.
Yes, go ahead.
I just, is there any way we can send this back and rethink a few of these things to make sure it's a little bit tighter? You know, we don't want to open up a big deal. So is it possible just to table this? Could we do it that way or do you want us to pass it subject to...
No, I think you should take it back to you guys.
Okay.
To address your concerns.
So let's just table this for now.
Yeah.
Can I get a motion?
And I'll even, I'll ask Shelley if the public hearing is enough or if we have to have another one.
Okay.
I don't think we do because we had one, but if we significantly change the language, we may have to.
Okay.
Yeah, so I would make a motion that we table this until we get more information.
I'm going to second that. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All's carries. Emma made that motion, I second it further. Okay, so then the next public hearing will be amending city code 152355 relating to sponsorship signage at parks and athletic complexes. Zach?
Yes, so the city is initiating an ordinance text amendment to amend city code 152355 to allow for sponsorship signage at city parks and city or school athletic complexes. This ordinance, or this section of the city code, rather, was changed in 2019 to allow for sponsorship signage at John Birch Park, but we are requesting you give approval to allow this type of signage at school athletic complexes as well.
So basically, I'm just going to repeat what you said. We already allowed that at John Birch Park. We want to put it at school also, and that sponsor will help us pay for that.
That is correct, yeah. They're already doing it on one scoreboard down there, and they're putting up another one. And it came to our attention that maybe back in 2018 or 19, whenever this was, that maybe they should have threw the school in at the same time.
Okay.
So it's, it's pretty simple.
Okay, so at this time, I'm going to open up that public hearing to amend city code 152.355 relating to sponsorship signage at parks and athletic complexes. Anybody wishing to address this amendment? Second call, anybody wishing to address this amendment? Third and final call, anyone wishing to address this amendment? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Committee, commission.
Got nothing for me.
Want to make that a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Emma, second by Johnson, to amend city code 152355 relating to sponsorship signage at parks and athletic complexes. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All's, motion carry. Okay. So that brings us to discussion letter C, moratorium relating to residential treatment facilities. Zach?
Yeah, so city staff are just curious about your thoughts regarding treatment facilities in residential areas. Perhaps there should be certain licensing or we should only allow these types of facilities via conditional use. So we were just wondering how we should approach, or proceed, rather, with this, with this matter.
Where are we currently?
There's a moratorium in place.
I mean, but we don't have any zoning requirements for these?
Yeah, yeah. Valley View is what we're talking about, type complex. We discovered that the nursing home and them types of facilities allow for inpatient residential treatment centers. It's not a secret of what's been going down at Valley View as far as people running around and, I don't know, I don't know if residential areas are the best places for them types of things, but we're seeking input from planning commission to get started on it. We, I think it was in May that we adopted a moratorium. Then we got busy with all these developments and waiting for Zach to get on board so we can get this thing talked about and discussed and maybe get it back to you in some sort of ordinance form. But the main question is, how do you feel about residential treatment facilities in residential districts? They are allowed in B1, I believe that's down there, or B2, I think it's B1, because they did put that one in a couple of years ago. So with the nursing home now being open, they'll be bringing that for sale, I believe, or hopefully they'll do something with it before it caves in because it's probably deteriorating as we speak. But we've got to get this talked about, got to get...
So currently, we don't actually have any ordinance that says residential treatment facilities are restricted to B1 or B2?
No, they're actually allowed in a residential area.
Okay.
And that's why we put the moratorium on, is because that they fall in the same category as a nursing home.
Does the League of Minnesota Cities have any guidelines on this or has it not really been an issue that's been raised?
That'd be a good question, but I think it's more of a local thing.
Okay.
What do you guys feel is the proper places for these types of facilities?
What, the last time we were debating this issue, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but the general feeling of the public was those, those types of facilities are needed. They're just, nobody's really sure whether they belong in a residential area. And I tend to agree with that as far as the, the safety factor. I don't know if it's a safety factor, but the, you know, sometimes there's a little security issue here and there, and we certainly don't want that in a residential area.
And that was the debate on the last facility, and they assured us that they would do some things if we had any issues, and we are having issues.
Oh, boy.
And I think we need to review what we talked about with them and see if they're going to improve security.
Well, you know, they were, I believe they had to come to us for conditional use and that, conditional uses are based on zoning.
Yeah.
And they met all the criteria, right? Remember all that?
Yeah.
And one of the, some of the things that we probably would have had them do was to fence it, but they didn't have to, right? And so I don't, I don't know, you know, like I said before, it is kind of a local thing. We need to talk about what we want before we...
And locally, I think, you know, it's something that's probably needed in a lot of communities. And it's certainly better use of maybe some of our law enforcement time that they just go here instead of drive for however far they'd have to drive someone to. So I think that our law enforcement appreciates that it exists, but they may not if there are other issues. And that was something that we talked about initially, too. It was a big deal. And they assured us that they would make sure that they had secure facilities, and that's interesting. We're kind of concerned about the old nursing home then, whereas what's going to happen with that? Because that's a target. I mean, that would obviously be a target for this kind of facility. If I was, you know, on these things, these residential treatment facilities are for profit, let's put it realistic, you know, they're not, they're just for the, for the good of every, everything. There's profit involved in it, and that's why they exist, and that's fine. But, but I can see that the old nursing home up here, which I understand is condemned at this point, is it?
For a nursing home, yes.
For a nursing home.
I believe, unless the facility gets a lot of work to bring it back. And that can be done. Don't anybody kid you, there's a couple of wings that are still good shape. The one wing kind of was not so good.
Well, it may be getting worse daily. I see broken windows and obviously there's people getting in there. As I drive by, not to mention all the blue tarps and who knows how much, the big, the big thing about that place is how much it's been damaged by lack of maintenance. I mean, is it full of mold? You know, what's underneath the surface here that we don't see?
Yeah.
And that's one of the things that would prevent anybody from, you know, making it into something else. I just wonder what, what's going to, because if you put a treatment facility in there and not a nursing home in there, and I'm sure that's how it's being targeted.
I think it's the location. It's a location thing.
My biggest thing is the location and the security.
Yeah.
It's a residential area.
Involvement in a treatment facility and...
I agree.
That's... That's, I think that's what we gotta look at as far as a moratorium.
I think we should continue the moratorium.
Yeah, I don't think we're talking about that, cause we've got a year.
Yeah.
Got till May.
Yeah, we've got till May. And what Zach is asking us is what we're going to ask him to do before we end up next April going, oh dear, we didn't do anything.
Yeah.
And what I'm hearing, and I think I agree with, is I think we definitely need to look at the zoning, and there are different kinds of residential treatment facilities. If you get something like Hazelton, you would welcome them into our community anywhere because they are highly reputable and do an incredible job. As you point out, with for-profits, things are not always, you know, it doesn't mean they're good, bad, or otherwise, but it's a different philosophy.
It is.
So, I think we definitely wanna look at the zoning issue. I also think while you're at it, if there's some way, if another residential treatment center wants to come in whatever we decide is the proper zoning, to have a much better handle on what we, enforcement areas that, you know, we can say, you know, this is what you agreed to, you're now in violation, this is what's going to happen, so that we have some teeth as opposed to pat 'em on the back and say naughty, naughty?
Yeah.
Does that make sense, or is that something that can happen? Okay. And that's what you want, asked us for, right?
You got, you got enough guidelines to go by as far as, start digging into it, man, see where we're going.
Yeah, I think that should be enough. Yeah, right?
Is there anything else we should mention, do you think, or?
So, opinion in a residential area, yes, no?
I'm, I'm no.
Well, if it's a nursing home again, that's not an issue, is it?
I, can we separate out nursing home and residential treatment centers?
That's, that's what the moratorium is on.
Right.
To discuss residential treatment facilities.
Right, and I, I would like to see those two separated out in terms of-
Right now, they're all a lump sum.
Right.
That's what we're talking about.
Better definition of residential treatment then.
Yeah.
Cause there, there's other things, you know, they could be, you know, areas where people go after they have surgery just to get-
Yeah, the rehabs.
The rehab center.
Yep.
But that's a different kinda rehab we're mostly concerned about.
Yeah.
I think Zach is getting our gist of what, what we're after.
So we'll bring back a definition?
Yeah.
A better definition?
Yeah.
And have it a whole separate thing, yeah, whatever, ordinance or whatever we call that. Cause if that makes sense.
People do ask about the, what's going on up there all the time, everybody's asking, what's going on up there? And I know it was hard on the residents when they got scattered all over the place, and that was done by the-
I know, I know they said that they would probably have a decision made by December. That was the one and only time I talked to the, the guy that's quasi-managing it, and he's out of Crystal, Minnesota. They own the same, same one up there that's down here.
Who is it that owns it?
Out of Crystal, up in Crystal, Minnesota.
It's Crystal?
Since that time, the phone went dead, and-
Okay. If, if, say default, is it on, in default then at some point?
They're up, taxes are paid up, electricity's still on, if you, some, the police have said that when they drive by at night, the lights turn on. So they're trying their best to keep things afloat.
And I know I drove by the back, and it was obviously somebody broke a window and went in.
Yeah, yeah, and we-
They're gonna start losing materials out of there, whatever's in there.
Yeah, that's unfortunate, because I think the building structure is in pretty good shape, it's gonna need some interior work, but the roof is what's, the roof is really what's gonna cost 'em.
Yep.
Yeah, it's always an interesting subject, the structure might look good, but is it a livable-
Right.
Is it a salvageable building anymore after the water damage?
Right.
And, and then you've got, if you have to get rid of it, what's the cost of getting rid of it, who does that?
Well, unfortunately, in seven years, guess who will own it?
Seven years it has to sit?
Yeah, it takes a long time. But they're up to, they've paid their taxes, so it's, it's not going into forfeiture.
Probably looking for another buyer somewhere, they're probably looking for a buyer.
They said they were looking, they'll have a decision on what they wanted to do, they actually talked about a, an assisted facility where the ratio for nurses is not as high, there's more money in it, because they don't have to pay RNs or whatever the, the title is on the nurses, and they don't have to have the quality of care for an assisted facility. You know, there's the assisted and nursing home, and then your basic, I don't know what you call the other ones where they're just living there, but there's three types of facilities. And the, it, the reason it costs so much is the more care that they have to have for, as you go, so-
They have to have a nurse there.
Yep, and then, and it's my understanding, is what this fella told me, is that you don't have to have a nurse there, you just have to have staff at an assisted facility. Don't know if that's correct?
I don't either.
So, they were looking at that, or just getting out from underneath it and selling it? I don't think they have any intention of letting it go to the dumps, let's hope not.
Are we gonna have to, at some point, maybe require them to have some security on site? Or are we gonna charge them more for our security from the city police?
That's, that's unfortunately, we can't do that, but we have, the police have tried to get in contact with them to clean up the nuisance that's hanging off the building.
Definitely a nuisance clause where they're, yeah.
So, yeah, we tried to, we tried to get hold of them in a, a friendly way, but they, like I said, they went silent on us, and, and now we're, I turned it over to the chief.
Wait for a crisis to happen there, and then we'll be able to-
Well, unfortunately, let's not hope for that, right?
Well, no, but-
Yeah.
That seems to be one of the ways that things-
Yeah.
The other way is to just hope for the best, and I don't-
Well, let's find out, maybe by December, what their plans are.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I'm just, I, I know that to have a nursing home in town is a good thing, and people was, it's great, you know, I mean, when you could just drive that far and see a loved one, it's in a nursing home, but obviously it turned into something else over the years, and that's sad, it's really sad.
Okay, anything else that's come before the-
Nope.
I was just gonna add one thing, Neil, has there been any interest in adding to our panel? Adding to our panel, has there been any interest? Nothing?
We've been out on social media, on our website. Word of mouth is always great.
So, I'm gonna put that out there now, that anybody willing to join us up here on the planning commission, feel free to contact city hall.
We've got two openings.
We've got two openings, so. Would love to have you join us, it's a lot of fun. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I was gonna say, I think we need to say, and they'll be able to sit down there so they don't have to sit with us over here.
That's right, yes, yes.
Yeah, troublemakers on this end.
Yeah, move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Emma, to adjourn this meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
All's, most carries.